Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the July 7th, 2014 Waukegan City Council meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo?
Here.
Alderman Beadley?
Here.
Alderman Newsome?
Present.
Alderman Tempest?
Present.
Alderman May?
Present.
Alderman Velco?
Here.
Alderman Rivera?
Present.
Alderman Cunningham?
Present.
Alderman Conken?
Present.
Please stand for the invocation by Bishop Colburn.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you for how you blessed us and how you blessed our nation. Over 200 years you've been blessing us. Thank you for the blessing of Waukegan. We thank you for the blessing of all of our leaders. You said, "Pray for them that in authority." I pray for them tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's comments. This Friday and Saturday, we are returning Scoop to Waukegan for the first time in five I hope that you all attend it. We're going to have classic vehicles both nights. Friday night will be open Scoop. If you want to come down and scoop your car downtown like we used to back in the '60s and '70s, it's no cost to you. Feel free to scoop. I'll be there on my motorcycle, and I will have a great time, I guarantee you that. Please show up. There will be nine bands on three different stages. Bella Kane will be there Friday night, a DJ will be on another stage, and there'll be a group down at the Steiner Pavilion. So we'll have three venues. We have food vendors. It's going to be just like it used to be, hopefully. And please understand this, we were out there hustling to get sponsors for this event, and we collected over $50,000 in sponsorship money for Scoop the Loop. So taxpayers, be aware, this is not on you, it's on us, and we paid for it. Second thing is on August 2nd, there will be an event by the Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. It will be a street corner poetry marathon from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and that will be at Ethan McAllister. So if you want to read poetry or recite poetry, or if you want to hear good poetry by local artists, please attend that. And that's all I have to say. The next thing was audience time, and that is CJ Tutt, 516 North Milwaukee Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor. I was in front of your Judiciary Committee, which was everybody, but I think Tony McConken and Alderman Beadley earlier today with regard to an agenda item that's coming up for a six-month, staff request for a six-month moratorium on considering an appropriate location for a medical marijuana dispenser. After that discussion, Judiciary Committee recommendations for a 45-day moratorium, not happy, but my clients are acceptable of that, and really the only reason I put my name on the list is if there's any other questions from the aldermen that were here earlier or the aldermen that weren't at the meeting, I can answer anything you need now. There's nothing else?
Any questions?
I'll let you go on with your being. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Cunningham, to approve the minutes of June 16, 2014, regular meeting and the executive session. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beadley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Our next item of business is a resolution proclamation presentation appointments. Item A, appoint John Stein, Jesus Ruiz, and Megan Spur to the Waukegan Public Library. Motion by Alderman Beadley, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Go ahead.
I didn't receive a resume of any of these people. I don't know who they are.
Okay.
Are they here?
They are not here.
Jose Ruiz and Megan are already on the board, correct?
And so is John Stein.
Actually, all three of them are. They're reappointments from people who are currently on the board. They're just being reappointed to the board.
These are reappointments, not...
Yes, that's all it is.
All right.
Reassignments, all of them.
Okay?
All right.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beadley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Are there terms?
Three years. Three years.
Three years, each one's three-year term?
Yes.
That's not the whole board either, there's another three...
There's more, there's six on the board.
There's six total, I think it's three and three staggered terms.
Yeah, three and three. They're staggered. Next item is the Judiciary Committee, Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. The Judiciary Committee met today at approximately 5:00 p.m. First item on the agenda is to adopt as amended an ordinance establishing a temporary 45 days moratorium on approvals for medical cannabis dispensaries within the jurisdictional boundaries of the city of Waukegan under the state of Illinois compassionate use of medical cannabis pilot program. And the reasons why we did this was to allow our staff to wait on the decision of the state in regards to the rules of these dispensaries. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beadley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
No.
Alderman Tempest?
No.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Item B, adopt as an ordinance, excuse me, present an ordinance approving zoning calendar number 2427, petitioner Mark Bickham, location at 1709 York House Road, and preliminary and final plat of re-subdivision. Earlier during the Judiciary Committee, there was discussion whether this property had sewer and water, which was, you know, affecting some of the decisions that the judiciary wanted to make. But Amy, who was representing the client, Mark Bickham, and went upstairs with Mike, and they checked on the tax bill, and it is on sewer and water. And they also have a bill which pays the North Shore sanitary water district. All these are separate meters, so it is all separate metered, and so we got the answer that we needed. So, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beadley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Item C, adopt as presented an ordinance approving zoning calendar number 2428, petitioner Mark Bickham, location at 1709 York House Road, 3128 Cornell Road. Variance on minimum lot size for lot number two, 3128 Cornell Road. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Your Honor. We're getting a variance? Can someone explain why there's a variance?
Amy, do you want to present?
Hi, Amy Stragi, Finn &amp; Finn Limited. I represent the estate of Marion Holm. Mark Bickham is the executor of her estate. The reason for the subdivision in general is that there are three houses, and in her will, Mrs. Holm bequeathed different of the houses to different people. After much discussion with Howard Surveying and my client, and with Steve Saborn in the planning and zoning, there was a couple different ways we could do this. We could either do what would be in essence spot zoning, and rezone it to R3, in which case these lot sizes would be actually fine. Or we could just leave it R2, which will retain the residential character of the neighborhood, make sure that it stays a single-family residence, and then just get a small, less than 5% variance on the two lot sizes to the south, the smaller of the two lot sizes, which will allow the corner lot, which has the largest house, to have a true corner lot and not need a variance itself. So this was seen as like the least amount of legal mumbo jumbo that we had to do to fix it, is the short answer.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, no, that's okay. That's all right.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beadley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
And then, item D, adopt as presented ordinance approving zoning calendar 2429, petitioner Mark Bickham, location at 1709 York House Road, 3124 Cornell Road. Variance on a minimum lot size of lot number three, Cornell Road. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beadley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Last item on the agenda, item E, adopt as presented an ordinance approving zoning calendar number 2430, the petitioner Robert DePelt, location at 525 South Green Bay Road, a conditional use permit for used auto sales, new and used auto leasing, and new and used auto repair. An ISO move. And this used to be the car wash that was on Green Bay Road, and they're going to be turning it into an auto dealership. And, you know, it's going to improve the site there with landscaping, and it's going to look a lot nicer, plus it's going to produce, you know, auto sales tax. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
And then, Mayor, we also have some people here.
Excuse me?
If you want to see a presentation real quick and how it's going to look, as long as it takes, you know...
Yeah.
Very quick. You know, it's the most part about the building that, and I won't show the site plan, competition, a lot of that, but, you know, I think the big one is the change in the character of really the car wash from, you know, the metal plaid building that looks like this to a new building with a bigger one with some, this will be the auto sales area, and they're using the deck basically for the auto area, and I think it's just going to be a huge improvement basically in an ugly building. So that is then next we're going to start working the budget and a good change to this building. Very good. Can you raise it up a little more? Thank you.
How long do you expect that to take?
You know, we really haven't started the construction drawings yet. We just wanted to get through this process. And the next one, I know I'm going to get a lot of pressure to start to...
Right.
...develop the final scheme, put the budget together, and do the permit drawings that will be required by the city.
Because Mr. DePelt said in the judiciary hearing that he wanted to be out of $3,300 grand sometime this week or today, sir.
We're out.
You're out?
Yeah.
So I know things... So that's what I'm saying, things have to hurry along real quick. Is that correct, sir?
Well, that's true, and part of the thing to make this transition, okay, make this transition a lot easier, is this part, clear it out, use it as some office space, and also they put a trailer here for the short time while we're doing the construction. So they're going to be operating here as soon as possible.
Okay.
And I think, you know, you've started...
Yeah, that's right, they're responsible for the trailer.
Okay, so that's how fast we can start to have it.
Sure.
Any other questions or anything? Sorry.
I'm sorry, just so we're clear, you're expanding your existing car lot, right, to include...
No.
That's not you next, that's not you to the salad?
They're moving from the place on Grand Avenue to this location, so it's basically not an expansion. It's just a... Moving into a new location.
What place on Grand Avenue?
Where the old car wash used to be there.
I know the old car wash on...
Right.
On Green Bay.
Right.
I'm talking about the, what...
New signs, if you go down just west on Grand Avenue, on the south side of the streets, kind of a drive-up building, a one-story building with glass.
Next door to the old Nissan.
There used to be Toyota and Nissan and Ford down there.
All right, yeah, yeah, all right.
Exactly, yes.
All right, all right, I know where you're talking about that, okay. I know him.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you, sir.
An ISO move.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beadley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Public Safety Committee, Alderman Conken?
Thank you, Your Honor. We had several items today. We met at 6 o'clock this evening. Proceed, item A, authorization to waive the bid procedure and purchase two 2014 Ford Interceptor SUVs at the state bid price of $28,461 each from Curry Motors Fleet in Frankfurt, Illinois. Funding will be from the Capital Outlay Vehicle Fund, line item 100301926493. ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beadley. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beadley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye. Item B, authorize the city to purchase 20 desktop computer systems under the National IPA Contract Number 130733 from CDW at a cost of $13,000. This is for the police department, and the funds for this purchase are available from the Federal Asset Forfeiture Fund, 296-629-626-495. ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beadley. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beadley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye. Item C, authorize the city to amend the city ordinance, section 23-12, entitled "The Age, Condition, and Type of Taxicabs, Limousines, Public Transportation Vehicles, and Medical Carriers." ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beadley. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beadley?
No.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye. Your Honor, I had one more item for information only. I just want to make everyone aware that the city of Waukegan and its fire chief received a letter from Dr. Brock Franklin from the Vista Emergency Room, Vista East. And I'd just like to read it. Dear Chief Farrell, the Emergency Department of Vista Health System would like to acknowledge the excellent work of the fire department, namely Brent Stickles, Thomas Clausen, Robert Schmidt, Brian Jacoby, and John Calabrese. The care they provided for a patient on May 30th, 2014, was extraordinary. Patient presented unresponsive in ventricular fibrillation, was shocked twice to get his rhythm, heart rhythm, back. The patient subsequently awoke and was breathing, and was taken to the EMS staff at Vista East. True life-saving events such as this are not routine and should not go unnoticed. Thank you to the Waukegan Fire Department for providing such exceptional and outstanding care. Signed, Brock Franklin, M.D., at the emergency center. And I'd just like to make sure that those men got recognized. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman. The next item is the Labor Relations Committee. We met today at 6:30. As the members know, that was held up by the city council for two issues. Number one was the length of the contract, which was six years. The alderman's concern was that a six-year contract would not be beneficial to either party because we don't know how the insurance rates would go up within that six-year period that was a substantial increase that we were anticipating. And the second item was the actual rate of pay. We since renegotiated that contract, myself, Tina Smagelski, Steve Martin, and Tom Dross. When the numbers are where they should be, they will not get a pay raise, 150, will not get a pay raise until May 1st, 2015, and that will be 1.5%. And they will get another pay raise in 2016 of 1.5%. They will be getting a 5% benefit in the first year because they are taking over their insurance. The city no longer will subsize their insurance. One benefit to that is when they retire, they pick up the tab, not the city of Waukegan. So it's beneficial to us to let this occur. As we discussed in the Labor Relations Committee, it seemed like the Labor Relations Board did vote unanimously to accept this as presented. That being said, motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Tempest, to approve the collecting bargaining agreement made between the International Union Operating Engineers Local 150, representing Public Employees Division, Public Works, and Police Auxiliaries.
Real quick, Your Honor...
Go ahead.
Just one maybe clarification is that 150, their insurance will now be covered by their union, and 150 is a huge union. So it's advantageous for them, and it's also advantageous for the city.
They're taking over 100 employees.
So the union of 150, which is a huge union, is taking over the insurance of that. So it's, those workers will be coming off the city's insurance and going on the union's insurance, which is better for them and better for the city. Thank you.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beadley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
I would also like to compliment the members of the union, their executive board, and their attorney, Ken Edwards, for a, what I would consider a very good understanding of what we needed as a city. They went back to their membership, and their membership was very cordial to us, and I really do appreciate that kind of cooperation between our union and 150. Next item is the, there is no old business, there are no reports of communication, new business. Item A, approval of payroll dated June 27, 2014, in the amount of $1,381,754.63. Manual check in the amount of $3,294.33. Final payout in the amount of $53,475.88. And bonus checks in the amount of $5,378.46. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beadley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated July 7, 2014, in the amount of $2,072,124.91.
That was a purchase I made for the alderman of the city of Miyazaki, Japan. I paid $1,200 out of my own check for that, and that was the, Noel, Kish, and I went shopping for the alderman of Miyazaki, and that was for the seven women on the executive board of the council of Miyazaki, Japan.
Well, what I'm wondering is, what account paid for that, which is $450? What account?
Tina, where did we take that out of?
City funds.
City funds.
I would assume that it would come out of your expense account.
We can do that, too. Makes no difference to me. Wherever it comes out of, I'll find with that.
To be truthful, I didn't even know we had a credit card until recently, and I thought that's what the expense account is for, that you make the charges with your own credit card or cash in terms of bills in the city. That's what I would prefer.
Well, what I did there with the credit card was, if you'll notice, because you have all the credit card bills, you'll notice that when the SWAT team gassed a house, there were six people who were displaced. I put all those bills on my city credit card. There's a record of that, you'll notice that. Everything you'll notice there was paid for. My stipends, when I went out of state and had fees that were incurred that would have been paid by my per diem, I put them on my credit card. You'll notice all that. If you want to put that $460 on my stipend, I don't have a problem with that. Understand, I paid $7,800 for the trip to Japan, on city business, actually, and I paid over $1,200 out of my own pocket for gifts, which is customary in Japan, and the $460, I made that charge the day before we left. So if you want that out of my expense account, I have absolutely no problem with that. Tina, if you could do that, that would be fine with me. Okay?
When was the last time you went to Japan on one of these exchanges?
Uh, I think five or six years ago. It, it stopped when the, when, when Mayor Sabanjan took, was elected.
I've been there.
And, yeah, Alderman Tempest has been there. Who else was there, Alderman? But, um, when I went, when I went to Japan, when I went to Japan, Miyazaki, Japan, is really into the exchange program, the sister exchange program, they went so far as to put Waukegan on a bench, a huge bench, at City Hall. As you walk into City Hall of Miyazaki, Japan, all the Waukegan memorabilia is right there as you come in the door. The program, I think, is, is well, is a good program. I think it's beneficial to both countries. They are sending a delegation here in September. We will find, we will find places for them. Last time they came here, they came here, they brought four members. Those of you who met them, I paid for that, so the city didn't pay for that. So basically, it's a good program, it's a worthwhile program. I think it's a program that's beneficial to our youth, who can see another culture and see another society as it works. And certainly, we've probably put about 50 children to that, David, about, would you say? How many children have gone on the exchange program?
Around, probably 75 to 100.
How many?
Probably closer to 75 or so.
75 to 100.
Yeah, students, yeah.
And those students, those, those were subsidized by corporate sponsors. So, anything else, Alderman?
Well, there's a number of bills here, and I, I would like to see maybe the Finance Committee get together, and we can go through all these bills and figure out something. And that's why we have expense accounts here. I, I think a lot of these charges need to come out of expense accounts. There's another credit card issued, I see lunches are purchased and things like that, and I have questions about those bills in the past as well.
Which bills are those, Alderman? Tell me which bills they are, and I'll tell you what they are. Which bills are you talking about? Hooters of Springfield. I went to Springfield, Illinois, on business, and I used, I bought lunch there, and you'll see what's, what, how much was it? Less than 10 bucks, what was it?
$24.
Okay, $24. I bought lunch at Spring, and if you'll notice, is a receipt there, Alderman?
Yes, there is a receipt.
Okay. Every time I charge on that, I charge on that account, I am meticulous about giving a receipt, sign, and explaining what it's for. What does the receipt say, Alderman? That, that amount was a per diem for the day. I'm allotted x amount of dollars by ordinance for lunch and dinner. That night, I stayed the night. The city didn't pay for it. I stayed with, I stayed with Angela Kyle, because I didn't want to incur the hundred and some dollars to have the hotel, so I stayed with Angela Kyle.
Your Honor, with respect to the alderman, if we can move along, if you want to bring it to the Finance Committee, which I chair, sir, or come with me, or come to me, I'd be more than happy to go over with you.
There's bills on that in 2013. I, I, I'm curious about, you know, we've asked these bill runs, and it seemed like there was a...
Alderman Velco, would you pick that up in the, in Finance Committee?
Would I what, sir?
Would you pick that up in Finance Committee?
Yes, sir.
He has all the receipts, all the credit cards. He has all the, my receipts, personal receipts.
Absolutely.
Where I personally signed it and explained what the bill was for.
Right.
It's a, for me, it was much easier to have it go through the credit card than to just have a bill, and it was just simpler.
I sure will.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Item C, approval of block parties. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please. I'm sorry, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinances and resolution. Item A, resolution supporting the Waukegan Regional Air Show by authorizing the temporary closing of Green Bay Road. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
What's the date?
You know the date in the Times?
David, the date?
Second, second week in September.
Second week in September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Item C, approval of block parties. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please. I'm sorry, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinances and resolution. Item A, resolution supporting the Waukegan Regional Air Show by authorizing the temporary closing of Green Bay Road. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
What's the date?
You know the date in the Times?
David, the date?
Second, second week in September.
Second week in September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moizio.
Yes.
Alderman Beadley.
For the record, I was never asked about the purchase of a car. I wish someone would've asked me about it, because I would've said no. Although there was a comment made to the New Sun that the seat council approved it in the bill run. Well, there's a lot of obscure things in here that, shame on you, maybe I'm gonna have to go through every, each and every bill. But I would've voted, I would've said, we need to cover that, what you need a car for, I would've never gone along with that. I, I, I think, we have an expense account, I think that's what it's for. Use your expense account. We don't have much money around here. $600,000 to do our roads, that's nothing. Speaking of roads, I, I think we need to find a way to make that water fuel tax $2.4 million, apply it only to street repaving. I don't care what we have to do, but I think that's one thing that at least people can count on, that we'll have $2.5 million or close to that every year to do a fair amount of repaving. I'm grateful that we're not using water enterprise funds to balance our budget anymore, and I hope we see us get caught up on our 100-year-old water incentives. Over the weekend, July 4 specifically, a lot of people were firing off fireworks. Apparently, the problem was too big, our first part gets calls, sitting on the board for an hour or more, can't deal with it. Maybe we need to have a specialized detail and make an example of some people. I see in our ordinance, you can confiscate fireworks, the fire chief can. Maybe we need to find people like over in Warwick that seem to have several hundred dollars' worth of fireworks. Two groups over there. One, one group was some kids. I just came down the street, because I heard all the commotion, and the kids let some stuff off, and they're gonna walk, walk away and leave it in the parking lot. And, and I got out of my car, and I yelled at them, "Pick it up and take it with them." I was gonna call the police. When a gentleman from 16th April came walking up to me and asked if I was gonna call the police, in which case he, he said, "I know where you live, I'll come and get you." I had to paraphrase, I'm not gonna say what he said to me, but these are the kind of people that we have to deal with in our community now. Did you, I, I've mentioned it before, is anybody aware that our police can enforce disorderly conduct laws anymore unless a citizen signs a complaint? Because our police are not supposed to be alarmed or disturbed by aberrant behavior because of some judge in Illinois decided that that's part of the job. So a citizen has to sign a complaint, and then make it known to his violent, perhaps, neighbor. Who signed the complaint? You have to show up in court. It just kind of throws cold water in everybody. I, I, I was speaking to an older Waukegan officer, who said in the past, on the weekends, our jail would be full. Now it's empty. We can't enforce loitering laws. You wonder why people hang out? Ever listen to some of these beasts talk to our police officers when a citizen calls about people hanging out, drinking in front of their residents? They know where our little line is. So they make our police officers look bad, like they're, they're ineffective. That makes me sick to watch that. You know, maybe we need to nullify some of these court decisions. What are they gonna do? You know, I want loitering enforced, I want disorderly conduct enforced. I think some of these people need to be locked up. You want to sue us, fine. What do they do if we don't show up in court? What if we refuse to pay? Who are they gonna arrest? Our chief of police? Who made the order to, to make these arrests? The mayor? You know what? Maybe we can just lose all that paperwork and information, just like the IRS loses all the paperwork that they were asked to produce. Our socia, our society is unravelling before our eyes. It's not getting better. And I think it's time we start getting tough with some of these folks and let them know that Waukegan's not gonna be a hospitable town. People are bad to paper. I'm tired of getting threatened, cussed at, and I'm polite to people up front. Please don't litter. Who the F are you? Who the F do you think you are? Realize. At least today, a child was littered over on North Genesee, and I was polite to a young man, asking, "Would you please not throw that on the ground?" I was surprised, the young man picked up his plastic bottle, picked up the plastic bag he tore up and threw in the ground. When you get close to my car, I said, "Young man, you don't want to walk with that garbage, you can throw it in the back of my truck." And I told him how much I appreciated that when he picked it up. I said, "Please don't litter." He even picked up another cup on the way to my truck, and see I am in the parking lot. But, that's one in a million. Most people would just cuss me out, keep on walking, because we can't enforce our laws around here anymore. Very disappointing. Starts in the home. Starts with the parents. Our police officer will tell me, they'll come across five and six-year-olds, tell them, "We hate the police." Where does a five or six-year-old learn that? Mom, or dad, perhaps? There isn't dad. Sure isn't the way it, the way it was when I was growing up. Everyone knew everybody in the neighborhood. If I stepped out of line, my dad already knew by the time I got home. And that was a lesson I didn't forget when I got home. I was taught to respect my elders. Wasn't the best student at school, but I thought I was the best student at school. I think, I'd like to talk to maybe our city attorney, by not about loitering and disorderly conduct. I don't care what the judge says. I think we, those are the two important laws that we need to enforce here for the law-abiding citizens of this community, because the law-abiding seem to have lost their rights. It's all about fairness to the criminals now. We want our rights back. If that means breaking some law, but some judge decides that we can't enforce anymore, I'd like to try that. Just use the code of law. If we want to take away funding that we refused, who's that gonna hurt? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Alderman Newsome.
Yes.
Alderman Tempest.
Yes.
Alderman May.
Thank you. I have a couple things. I just wanted to remind everyone that on July 18, which is a Friday, the Prairie State Cycling Series is coming to Waukegan. This is our first year for this event. The Waukegan Chamber of Commerce and Waukegan Main Street are co-sponsoring the bike race and the block party that coincides. They have, there's eight different races that take place in Chicagoland. The race, races kick off at 11:00 a.m., and they end about 8:00 p.m. There's a block party at the corner of Sheridan and Clayton from 3:00 to 11:00, also sponsored by Main Street and the Chamber. There'll be live music, lots of fun. I encourage everyone to come out for a different type of event in Waukegan. This is our first time, and we really, really want everyone's support. So please come out for the bike races on July 18. I also want to talk a little bit about the beach. It's been a hot topic on social media. I saw the New Sun picked up and did an editorial on it this week as well. And while, at the end of the day, I do agree with some of the things the New Sun, the editor at the New Sun said about our efforts at the beach, I do want to say that thanks to all the volunteers for these many years, we've been able to maintain our beach and keep it beautiful. Anyone who says something negative about a beach, about our beach, I challenge them to come down there and actually see it for themselves, because it's quite lovely. And that's due to the hard work of a lot of volunteers. This weekend, we kicked off our volunteer series of cleanups with the Friends of Waukegan Beach, and we have scheduled throughout the summer, so far, Waukegan to College, St. Dusmas Youth Group, South Genesee Merchants Block, Greentown Yoga Club, Waukegan Main Street, and our own Waukegan police, the NPU, along with their neighborhood watch groups, have also signed up for a, a date to clean the beach. And this will be all volunteer hours. It will not be on city time when the police come down. So I just want to thank everyone for their efforts, and David Motley, my partner on the lakefront issues, who's down there every morning with our eco ambassadors. We wouldn't be able to do it without David. With all that said, I, I do want to say an extra special thank you to the mayor. We had a discussion today after we've survived a couple of, of weeks now that summer is finally here, and the mayor is committed to preserving and taking care of our most important asset in my, our most important natural asset in Waukegan. And the mayor is very committed to helping us with our efforts with garbage at the beach, and has committed to helping us get some professional help on the weekends, so David Motley and I aren't spending all of our Saturday and Sunday mornings emptying garbage cans. So, Mayor, thank you so much for supporting us on these efforts. The Lakefront Committee will be working diligently over the offseason to come up with a better long-term plan, and we want to deal with things besides garbage. We want to make the beach a destination place for Waukegan. The mayor is also going to give us a hand on getting some better enforcement and better education and enforcement on the issues we're having with the jet skis and the motorized watercraft coming ashore. We got the ordinance done, and now the hard work really starts. So, Mayor, I just want to, I really want to thank you for your assistance and continued support on these issues. My last comment, I'll dovetail on Alderman Beadley, it's litter. So besides the litter at the beach, garbage seems to consume our lives. I'm a marathon runner, I run all over the city, all over my ward, and it's everywhere. If everyone, I talk to kids all the time, I talk to people all the time, if everyone took care of their own little space in this world, your storefront, your yard, your neighborhood, what a more, much more beautiful city we would have and town, and we could be so proud. Why do you throw your McDonald's wrapper out? It's in the neighborhood, it's not just Grand Ave, Sheridan Road. I'm seeing this on Chestnut, on Glenn Denny, I'm seeing it everywhere. Why, why can't you make it home with your McDonald's bag and put it in your own garbage? I don't get it. I mean, the things that we pick up, and a lot of it's at the beach, do you know an aluminum can takes 80 years to decompose? A plastic beverage bottle, we get plenty of those, 450 years to decompose. Disposable diapers are one of our favorite items at the beach cleanups. 450 years. And here's the winner. Glass bottles, how many Corona bottles have I picked up this summer? How about you, David? Hundreds? 1 million years. Don't bury your bottle in the sand. It's not going anywhere. It's not gonna disappear. Please, pick up your garbage. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Velco.
It's already been mentioned tonight, and I'm sure it's gonna be mentioned again, but Scoop the Loop is coming to town. Please come Friday night and Saturday night. Friday night, Bellicane, local band, school teacher from Waukegan, chief, one or two firemen in that band. One for sure?
Rob Harvey, one.
Right, just one, just one for sure. Local band, they're extending out into the countryside now, let's say, I think they have a tour bus now and everything else, they'll be here at 6:00 o'clock on Friday. Please come and support this group. It's the first time in five or six years that we are having something back downtown. Expect a lot of people down here. And see you then, but everybody, just be there and have a good time. Thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Yeah, I want to echo what Alderman Velco was saying, looking forward to scooping Genesee and meeting everybody and seeing everybody, a lot of old friends. For some reason, you know, you get to see all your, your, your friends from the past, so looking forward to that. I also want to, you know, thank the mayor, too, as well. Mayor, you've always been, you know, for me, you've always been transparent, and I appreciate, you know, what you do. You've done a lot of good things in the city, and there's a lot of good things coming up, too, for the future of the city, so I appreciate what you do. You do an outstanding job when it comes to that. Your office is always open. You never hide anything. You always communicate with your, the alderman if there's something that needs to be done. So I appreciate all that, what you do. So, thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Alderman Cunningham.
Just one item, and this goes, I don't know about the rest of the wards, but during the summer hours, I, I noticed that a lot of our young men and young ladies like to stay in our parks a little bit longer. I know we have regular patrol, but I, if I'm not mistaken, chief, Wallace, we do have a park police officer, if I'm not mistaken, that's by the, I think it's governed by the Park District. If we could, we can bump up that, them guys going to check out those, those parks. It's been some great days out, it's just, I know it's hard to go inside when it's real, real nice out there, and, but it's causing some of our, some of our long-term residents just to be uneasy right now, just having that many young folks in the park. But that, with that being said, I'm glad that's the only issue they're having with them, too. Second, I, I do want to just comment off Alderman May's perspective on our beach. I know there were some comments, or I think it was an editorial, or I think, as she said, the New Sun picked up on some, on some things, but, you know, it, it is not often that you can appreciate something till you've been there. And I tell you, growing up in Waukegan, there is nothing better than walking down Genesee, than go down the Belvedere Bridge, walking past Maitland when was there, walking across all the way around, and that's the appreciation that most of us Waukegan nights have. And, and until you've really experienced it on a daily basis, then you really don't know what, what we have here. but they don't come down, in my opinion, to disrespect. They come down because it is a great place to enjoy a day, a day out on the beach in Waukegan. So, whatever we have to do, and it sounds, it sounds like the mayor is somewhat, I shouldn't say somewhat, is committed to that. Obviously, Alderman made her tireless efforts, and this has just been, I tell you, if anybody's put a stamp on something, she has put a stamp on our beach. And to you, young lady, I say, thank you very much for doing that. And, and hopefully, the bug gets caught on with all of us. But you don't know the experience of being out on the beach until you've really, really gone through and do the things I'm talking about. Been down there all day with no towel and dry off as you walk back home. That's the Waukegan beach that I know. I really wish we could do something with those dunes, but that's another subject. We wanna get on that. But our beach, for me, will always be, and for my children, a great place to enjoy a good day out on the beach. No drinking, though. We didn't do that. I didn't. I'm telling the truth. Thank you. That's it.
Alderman Conken.
Thank you. I hate to keep harping on this, but I have to join both Alderman Beedling and Alderman May, who were talking about the littering. I did get a call a couple weeks ago. A young lady in my ward caught somebody throwing trash out the window, yelled, "Don't throw your garbage." Well, this person stopped, put it in reverse, came back and said, basically, threatened her, "Who are you to be telling me what to do?" You know, using a little bit stronger language and that. Then this person took it a step further, followed her to work. Now, it was reported, and my neighborhood policeman, she knows about it, and she's following up to make sure nothing happens, and I hope that was the end of it, but it was a very disturbing experience for this individual. That's why I got the phone call. So, I understand both Alderman May's point, I understand Alderman Beedling's point, that we gotta get a little bit more civil, and we gotta take care of the little things that'll take care of the big things. Secondly, I'd like to say that we had a great Fourth of July parade last week. We had great fireworks Friday night, and I'm looking forward to a great scoop this weekend, and I hope everybody shows up downtown, has a good time. And lastly, I'd just like to extend my condolences. Twenty-eight-year veteran of our Waukegan Police Department, Lieutenant Steve Harvey and his wife Linda passed away on a, from injuries they received in a motorcycle accident in Arkansas.
Arkansas.
Arkansas, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry to hear this. He was a great guy. He always had a smile on his face, and I hope the family is very, is consoled, and I hope they rest in peace. Thank you. I already won.
No, here we went.
Okay. No audience time. Amy Striggi.
I'll be real quick. I'm just putting on my Greentown Waukegan hat now. I just wanna remind everyone that our garden is up and growing. We put an additional raised bed, so we're up to 42 fruit and vegetable beds free to anyone who wants to pick. And with it being free, if you're down there to pick food, go ahead and pull a weed while you're at it. That would be greatly appreciated. We also have some upcoming events I wanted to announce. July 19th at 8:00 p.m. during the art walk. We'll have telescopes from the Lake County Astronomy Club. They're gonna be coming down for free, women, children, men. People of all ages can come on down, see some awesome sights over the lakefront. It's not every day that we have telescopes in downtown Waukegan. We're also having on July 20th, that same weekend, at 1:00 p.m., that's a Sunday, a cooking class taught by Chef Jory McGuire, who's a graduate of CLC. And we're hoping to pair up with some other graduates of other culinary institutes throughout the rest of the summer. You can check us out on our Facebook page or at www.waukegan.org for more information. And please join us for only $20. We're selling memberships. Our season goes May to May. You can, you can buy those online through PayPal, or you can stop me wherever you see me. And I also wanna say, because he's here, David Villa Lobos is our volunteer coordinator, so he's our chief weed puller organizer. So I wanna say thank you to him for his work, and all of our volunteers. We have a whole army of people, so we thank them. The garden is located between Associated Bank and Sterns Building on the south side of Washington, off of Genesee. The address is 25 South Genesee.
Thank you, Ms. Striggi. Jane Ferry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Jane Ferry, 531 Leith Avenue, Executive Director of Waukegan Main Street, and I wanna say thank you all for listing all the things that are going on. I appreciate it when other people know what the activities are in downtown or at the lakefront. That really helps us out a lot. So, Scoop is this weekend, Friday and Saturday, Friday starting at 5:00. And next weekend, as Alderman May pointed out, we have the Prairie State Cycling Series, the first one of the eight, and it's the first one in Waukegan. It's very high energy. It's very fun. It's something hip and cool to come down and see, and especially since it's the first year it's in Waukegan. The next Saturday, which is July 26th, is the Wine and Art Stroll. Waukegan Main Street has had that Wine and Art Stroll. This will be the seventh year. We love it. If you'd come down and meet some of the business owners that you don't always get an opportunity to meet, because of course, they're running their business when you come in, and meet some of the gallery curators as well as the artists. It's a lot of fun. It's walking around downtown. It's getting to see maybe some sights that you don't normally get to see. And I would like to add on to something a couple of people have mentioned. Volunteering really makes a community stronger. We have all kinds of volunteer opportunities within Main Street, but we also have a number of other organizations within the city that can use volunteers. Once you get involved in your city, you really start noticing what's going on in your community, who's involved in the community. It lifts us all up, including people picking up garbage, people pulling weeds, people really looking around and saying, "The place that I live, that I work, and that I am invested in, whether it's financially or otherwise, has got to look right." So if you would like to volunteer, or you'd like some more information, please feel free to call Waukegan Main Street at 847-623-6650, and I think you all know our web address, but I'll give it to you anyway, waukeganmainstreet.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks.
Blanks. Founder-in-chief, President, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. And I also wanted to just kinda let you all know about an upcoming event, as the mayor had made the announcement in the opening. And I just wanted, one of the most important aspects about that is that this is also our fundraiser that we're having. And just to, wanted to tell you a little bit about our organization, what we've been doing. We have been providing literary services and writing programs to the community since 1995. We are, since 1995, we had our incorporation, our 501(c)(3). My accountant reminded me, 'cause I had forgot, just past May, we was incorporated for 10 years now. And the services that we've been providing, we've been blessed to be able to keep our doors open without any state or federal funding. We've been self-sufficient so far. But this is primarily how we raise funds to keep our organization going. We've had some local contributions, like Alderman Rivera, and also from the township, a couple of contributions. But other than that, it's been from the grassroots of the community. And as I said, you know, a lot of work that we've been doing has been in the literary area and working with our youth. Also, along with the balance of challenging issues of social justice and equality. But we believe in challenging issues, the balance of that is first holding ourselves accountable to the same standards that we hold our government or injustice accountable. And that begins with working with our youth, and holding them accountable, and how they present and conduct themselves before the community. We have zero tolerance when it comes to young men coming into our organization. We do not allow them in there with their pants down. So I would say that that is an issue that is definitely worthwhile addressing. But I am glad to know that you all did see it as a fact, that I don't think it's a, it's not so much of a, if you will, a legislative issue as it is a issue of moral conduct and correction, and education and information. But anyway, so if you would like to come out and join us, this will be at 801 McAllister Avenue. If you'd like to make a contribution to what we've been doing, our phone number is 773-510-1713. We are looking to provide services to the community for another 20 years and beyond. So as I said, we've been blessed to do this so far with just the grassroots efforts of the community. But we welcome all contribution to help us to continue to work with our youth and to hold them accountable to a higher standards, and also to help them with their literary and writing skills. So, that's again, 773-510-1713, and that's Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks. Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman May, to adjourn. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.